I'd like to call the Pasadena City Council meeting to order, March the 15th, 2016. If we'll all stand, please. Daniel Sallar Chaplin, Pasadena Police Department. That corrects pronunciation. Will give us the invocation and Councilmember Ronaldo Yubera will lead us in the pledges.
The wisdom of God is beyond imagining and its goodness knows no bounds. He never fails to enlighten our minds to a new and better way of sharing with each other all kinds of information, ideas, and aspirations. Thus, we come to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, as we assemble here this evening, we give you thanks and praise. We ask that you bestow your wisdom and understanding on us as we come together to make decisions that will affect the people of Pasadena. Watch over us, Lord, as we endeavor to continue to keep the city of Pasadena a safe and great place to live and to raise a family. Lord, we ask that you bless our mayor, Mayor Isbell, and all the members of our city council into whose hands you have entrusted the lives of our citizens. We ask, Lord, your blessing also on all those who serve in our city government in whatever positions they hold. We ask that also that you bless our first responders of fire and rescue and especially our police officers who potentially put their lives in harm's way every day. Lord, keep our citizens safe and well under your watchful eye. Bless them and help them to prosper in all that they do. As citizens, unite us, yourself, in the bond of love and keep us faithful to all that is true. As overseers of our community, let us be ever mindful of our obligations to you and to the citizens of our community so that in all we do for them, we may give glory to you, who is Lord, forever and ever. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Well, you told me the pledges to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Mr. Yubera.
I'm back there.
Uh, let's see here. Councilmember Lehman.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I'd like to congratulate our animal control department, Ken Donnell, Kathy Perez from the Health Department, Ginger Bishop, and everybody affiliated with the Cause for Pals event that the city had. I believe, if I'm correct, over 130 animals found new homes that weekend, and I'd just like to congratulate them on the job well done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wheeler.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Casados is going to be here tonight, but he asked me to thank the members of his Neighborhood Association, Deepwater Neighborhood Association. They had an Easter egg hunt this past weekend, had over 100 people show up raising money for the neighborhood and do some projects in the area. So, he's real grateful for that and wanted to tell everyone thank you and thank you for coming. That'll pass.
Councilmember Bass.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm glad y'all could make it tonight. We want to just keep our prayers and look over the people that are down there in Deweyville and around the Sabine River. I don't know if they've opened it or closed it or what they've done on I-10. But they closed now. But we want to keep them in our prayers because we could have been flooded just like them. Anyway, that'll pass.
Councilmember Waager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming out without a pass.
Why, he did the best one of all. One oh. Councilmember Van Hout.
Well, you know you're going to get an update. The It's Time Texas Community Challenge, Pasadena's running ahead, at least as of yesterday. The mayor did the challenge video, and we've been staying ahead since then, and we're down to the last few weeks. There is not another council meeting before the end of this. So, please, keep entering your healthy activities and your photos. They have to be in before midnight on March 31st. There's a chance that Garland may dump a bunch of stuff in at the end. So, keep putting stuff in, keep putting stuff in. We're looking good right now. The Trash Bash is on Saturday, April 2nd. Registration from 8:30 to 9:30 in the morning. This is at Bay Area Park, and they will also be working out of Holly Bay Park. The cleaning up is actually from 9:00 to noon with lunch from noon to 1:00. That is only at Bay Area Park, and if you register there, they will put you on a bus and take you to a location to clean. And if you want to have the lunch, you need to wind up back at Bay Area Park, but if you're not concerned with that, you can just go to Holly Bay Park and clean up around there and save the drive. And for those of you who are doing the Rotary Fish Fry, that's the same day, so you may want to go there for lunch instead. If you do the Trash Bash, they provide the gloves, the safety vest, the trash and recycling bags, and you get to keep the gloves, and they've got some nice quality gloves. Happy St. Patrick's Day and a blessed Easter.
Councilmember Morrison.
Okay, I know Councilmember Wheeler brought up the Deepwater Easter Egg Hunt that Councilmember Casados helped put together with Karen Holland. I see you here as well. I was able to attend that as well, but I think that is the first community Easter Egg Hunt they've had in that area. What a breath of fresh air, somebody helping with the Deepwater Neighborhood Organization. I see you out there. And, but it's just amazing what they're doing there and continued success in your new neighborhood organization there. And also hello to Marie Reed. Good seeing you there. That'll pass.
Well, it's already been said, the Cause for Pals was a huge success. It's where several cities got together and came out to our, I guess, our Campbell Hall there. They had all the cats in Campbell Hall and all the dogs in the stadium there, but huge success, and we're going to continue that with other cities. I think there's three other cities that we're going to move from city to city with this big adoption program, and I think that's great. And 135 animals received homes this last Saturday, which I think is great. Maurice, good to see you. Yeah, and who else, I see? Oh, he's not here tonight. Anyway, okay, council, it gets us down to Citizen Wishing Dress Council. Howard Herman Weber. Sign your name like a doctor. A former city employee for many years.
Yes, thank you, and enjoyed every minute of it.
Yeah, right.
Looking back, I enjoy it. Mayor Isbell said, my name is Herman Weber, and I'm the president-elect of Pasadena Rotary Club. I will, in the coming year, I will be the third president, third person, third city employee, or former city employee that held that position. With me was Roman Buzowski and currently we are the club. I'm really proud of that. I'm here today to invite you to our annual Pasadena Rotary Fish Fry and Family Fun Day that will be held on April 2nd, 11 to 3 o'clock, at Campbell Hall at the Rotary Club. It's an annual event where we raise money for the activity we take on during the year. We're going to have lots of entry. Foods, food tickets are $10. Children under seven are free, and there is takeout available if you can stay for the Fish Fry. It's going to be cooked by Constable Samuel's team. We'll have salad options. We have reverse draw. We're going to have a cake walk, and we're going to try to get some of those knocker balls out there, the ones that you get inside and run around in if you can, if you can see her. I want to invite you and all the community out to come join us. It's a more worthy cause. I'd like to tell you, last year when I was here, I told you a little bit about what Rotary is all about. After that, I decided to compile some of this of Rotary, and I left each of you a little seven-page document on what Rotary does, and that's simply what we've done in basically the last 15 years in Pasadena and also throughout the world as an international organization. This year in October will be our 30th, oh, excuse me, our 80th birthday in Pasadena, and we feel honored to be here, so we're enjoying it. Other than that, I guess that's about all I have. Oh, I also left you a picture of the reverse draw, our vehicle that we're giving away on our first draw.
Wow.
Come on out and join us, and our community is invited.
All right. Karen? You're up.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Madam Secretary. I'm Karen Holland. I manage the industry network. It's an honor to be here this evening. I'm delighted to let you know and report again on the Deepwater Easter Egg Hunt. We have family tradition cookers. Would y'all stand up, please? I want to recognize this group of, well, one lady. She's, she works with her team, and they are donating barbecue to do another fundraiser for Deepwater. It's going to be on the 26th of this month. It's going to start from 10:00 in the morning until 7:00 p.m. It'll be at the Kruger Parking Lot. Barbecue plates are $10. Thank you so much. She's a member of the organization, and they're go-getters. They're really working hard, so we really do appreciate you. Y'all give her a hand, please. Also, I just want to say that we had 113 children come out to the Easter Egg Hunt, and we had 300 families. So, we had a much larger turnout than what was expressed. The group raised $700, and that's a good start for their grant program. So, we're hoping to raise a couple thousand dollars at the barbecue event, and with that said, they'll have the match for their neighborhood signage and their landscaping that they want to do. So, we're real excited. I want to thank Councilman Casados. He and his wife worked very hard. He got a jumpy donated, got tables and chairs. It was good to see Councilman Morrison there, Councilman Wagner. Talk about teamwork, they all work together, and that's what we need in our city. You know, the councilmen working together to help the neighborhoods. So, I want to thank you both for your support. Tonight, we're here, the main reason, Mayor, is that we have a special person that is moving from our city, and we're a little sad about it, but we're happy for her new journey. Marie Reed has been the president of Baywood Shadows. For how many years, Marie? For three years. Wanda Bland was the president before that, and many of you know Wanda Bland. She's a great leader. It was tragic and heartbreaking for all of us when Wanda passed away, and Marie did what any good neighbor would do. She stepped up, and she took the reins and did a fantastic job. Darryl, I know you've worked with her, Councilman Wagner, Mayor. She's thorough, she's just a quality person. You've done such good work in your neighborhood, and you will greatly be missed by the city. She, I can call her, and she's there. She helps with any project, but she also works on the Historical Society. She works with pet adoption. She truly is a great neighbor in the city of Pasadena. So, we're going to miss you, but before you go, we wanted to probably thank you, and we have a little plaque for you to put up, and it just says, basically, the city of Pasadena, Texas, Mayor Johnny Isbell, City Council, along with Karen Holland and the Neighborhood Network Division, congratulate Marie Reed. Thank you for your dedication and leadership in improving the Baywood Shadows neighborhood and the city. Thank you. Come on out. Does anyone get a picture, please? I'd like to get a picture. Could we stand up and give her a picture with Mayor and Council? Would you like to speak, please, Marie? Please.
I only sing if Darryl sings with me. I just wanted to say that Baywood Shadows is a totally volunteer neighborhood, and we don't really want anything from anyone, except we love the matching grants from the city that help us continue to make it a better neighborhood. Otherwise, we just, everyone's very hardworking. They, most men and women work, and they've always done that, and they're self-sufficient, and they just think Pasadena is a great place to live, and I totally agree with them. We just want to thank all of y'all for the matching grants. Thank you all. You just don't even know what they do for our neighborhoods, and they're an encouragement for us to spend all of our dues, which 100% go to the neighborhood, and we are very appreciative of what you do for us. A lot of the things that have happened since I took over as president have, we've done an awful lot, and I've enjoyed it so much, and I hate to leave, but we've established mandatory dues, which are $40 a year, which is not very much at all, but it has made our, it's made our budget stable rather than not having any idea what we were going to have to work with every year. We've got new entrance signs, new deed restriction signs. We now offer credit cards to be able to pay those little amount of dues. We've landscaped a very large esplanade so that it's beautiful instead of a very, let's see, what would I say, a dump? That's what it, it was the Christmas tree drop area, and we've gotten that looking beautiful. We've gotten new street signs to divide, divide up streets so that you know where one starts and one ends. We have a huge email list for the residents now so that we're very, very easily able to get out any notice, even if the city hasn't noticed, that they need for us to tell there's been a spill or stay in your house or whatever, because we have over between 400 and 500 emails, and that's pretty neat. The board, of course, is fully volunteer, and I have a fantastic board. I have no complaints whatsoever. They're absolutely wonderful people to work with, and they only do it because, most of them work full-time, and they do it because they love, not only Baywood Shadows, but they love Pasadena. And I just can't say enough about them. Several were going to try to come tonight, but they may not have gotten off work in time. One of the things that I've done is that I reviewed the board positions, and I saw that such as our bylaws asked that we had to have an assistant treasurer and secretary. That's one position, but they weren't doing anything. So, they're now the garage cell coordinator, too, folded into that position, and that really helped us a lot. And we, now that I'm heading off for Central Texas, which I'm going to miss Pasadena so much and working with all of y'all, y'all are lovely, lovely people, I've been reviewing who's not doing anything on the board but has a position, which is such as the vice president. So, now the vice president and the president are going to divide all the duties up, which will make not one person not have to work so very hard. Anyway, I just want to thank each one of y'all. Thank the community, and I appreciate being able to speak for just a moment to say all that I feel in my heart, and thanks again. It's been such a pleasure.
Thank you, Marie. Thank you. Okay, well, I guess everybody assume the position they have. One more, B.
Pardon me?
Let's see, 8B now.
Pardon me?
8B. 8B on the agenda is sponsorship presentation.
Oh, I have one more?
I know.
Oh, okay. Is that all right for me to go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. I want to, so where are things on Marie? Marie is one of those other neighborhoods who people think that all the South neighborhoods have paid assessments. They do not. Marie had to get all that money donated to do the match on the grant program. So, she, her and her team did that. Not only did they do that, they also got their deed restrictions renewed. So, give her a hand for that. Very tough job to do.
One.
Okay, our next presentation is for Fairmont Estates 1 and 2. Ralph Morrissey is the president. Would you stand up, Mr. Morrissey? Mr. Morrissey has also done a fantastic job with his team. Would you have your team stand up, please? All of Fairmont Estates 1 and 2. We want to thank you for being here tonight. They, single handling, went out and got their deed restrictions taken care of. Do y'all know how hard that is? That's door-to-door work, having to convince people that you need them, and Mr. Morrissey, would you come up and speak for a moment? Mr. Morrissey has worked for 50 years in telecom industry, so he's quite a knowledgeable man.
I left my 40-minute speech at home, so I'll just say a few words. Back in 2008, with the help of Karen, our, some members of our subdivision got together to create the Fairmont Estates Neighborhood Association to help deal with the flooding that was occurring on the north end of our subdivision. Thanks to the city, a lot of that has been resolved. We have a holding pond, we got new drains put in, some sewers replaced, et cetera, and it's really done wonders. Well, someone happened to notice that for some reason our deed restrictions were set to expire in 2012 and 2013 for the two sections. Don't know why it was written that way, but it was. So, we scrambled to figure out how to do it and finally came up with a plan, went, like you said, door-to-door, sometimes had to go five times to catch somebody at home, and went ahead and got them to sign and notarized, getting them renewed. And the first one we got done and turned it in on February 29th of 2012, it was due March 1st, so that was kind of close. And then the other one, we beat it by three days. But anyway, it, having those deed restrictions and now enforcing them has made a huge difference in how the neighborhood looks as far as trailers and boats and things of that nature. And thanks to the city for the few times that letters advising people the deed restrictions have worked, the city legal department has written letters, and it's amazing the incentive when, potential of getting a $10,000 fine, what it can do for you as far as wanting you to move that boat that you don't use anyway. So, anyway, that's pretty much it, and I just appreciate the help that the city's given us. Thank you.
I have another, my good to states, the city, Pasadena, Mayor Johnny Isbell, City Council, along with Karen Holland and the Neighborhood Network Division. Congratulations to you, Ralph Morrissey, the Fairmont Estates 1 and 2. Thank you for your dedication and leadership in improving the Fairmont Estates neighborhood and the city.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Ralph and Marie, thank y'all very much for what you do. It's nice to see positive stories like this of our citizens acting to help make their community a better place to live in. Okay, council, I think it gets us down to the March 1st minutes.
Motion.
Is there a B?
Motion by councilmember. Pardon?
B.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, come on up here. I don't want to, I don't want to miss you of all people. No, that was the good information you have. Thank you, Pat.
Good evening to everyone. I don't know if it can hear me, if y'all can hear me. I'm trying to speak loud. My name is Jacob Geiberson, and I'm here on behalf of the Multipurpose Recreation Center under Parks and Recreation. I'm here to present a plaque to Pasadena Bay Area Junior Forum. The Junior Forum is a continuing asset to the multipurpose center through volunteer hours and monetary donations. The group recently donated $5,000 so that we can get an all-accessible exercise bike for the center. This bike has a removable seat so that people in wheelchairs can roll up and use the hand cranks. We would like to present this award to Pasadena Junior Forum and thank them for all their support to better the lives of people with disabilities. And I really don't want to push it, but can we get a picture?
Anybody got a camera? If y'all will turn around and kind of face this camera here, this is the one that gets you on TV. All right, I guess we'll get our exercise.
Take pictures of this and send it on the community.
Yeah. Could we do a, could we do a silly one, too? I know it's a personal play, too.
You didn't see behind you.
Just one silly one, real quick, please.
He just didn't see behind you.
You won't want that.
All right, now it gets us down to item 10. Minutes of March, March 1st, motion by councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by councilmember Lehman. Does the minutes of March 1st be approved? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Disposed? Motion carries. Gets down to progress payments. 13A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Motion.
Motion by councilmember Wheeler. Second by councilmember Morrison. Progress payments be approved? Is there any discussion? It's down to finance resolution.
You want to vote?
All right, yeah, let's vote on that one, by the way. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Finance resolution 2706.
Motion.
Motion by councilmember Yubera.
Second.
Second by councilmember Lehman. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to abstain from anything to do with Bass Monarchy on this.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Disposed? Motion carries. Item 15, which is A, personnel changes.
Motion.
Motion by councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by councilmember Bass. Personnel change, I mean, excuse me. Yeah, personnel changes be approved? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Disposed? Motion carries. Gets down to final readings, Madam Secretary, and you and me read 34, 35, but we're going to keep 40 and 41 separate, so we'll come back and read those, too, after we vote on these.
Ordnance 201634, extend annual contracts with Bass Monarchy Number 1 LLC, AutoNation Ford, Go Freeway, and Monument Chevrolet for automotive repair parts and supplies. Ordnance 201635, contract with McKinney Construction, Inc. for State Highway 225 Waterline Phase 1 project and appropriating $2,934,592. Ordnance 201636, contract with Dinabom Engineering Corporation for design services for Shaw Street 12-inch waterline project and appropriating $177,620. Ordnance 201637, contract with IDS Engineering Group for design services for water storage tank rehabilitation project and appropriating $150,350. Ordnance 201638, contract with Civil Concepts, Inc. for land survey services for Scarborough 12-inch waterline project and appropriating $31,000. Ordnance 201639, contract with Montgomery Building Services, LLC for public library restroom remodel, $190,108.60. Ordnance 201642, contract with Civil Concepts, Inc. for land survey services for State Highway 225 12-inch waterline project Phase 2 and appropriating $31,666. And ordinance 201643, amending ordinance number 201510A, which adopted the annual budget for the year 2016.
Motion.
Motion by councilmember Yubera.
Second.
Second by councilmember Morrison, that ordinance is 2016034, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 42 and 43. Pass on second and final reading. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I'd like to abstain from ordinance 2016034 in regards to the Bass Monarchy.
Okay, any further discussion? Pat, don't we have an amendment for 43?
This is an ordinance 201643, which is amending the 2016 budget, and they've added a couple of things, and we're getting them in now rather than sticking them on the next budget amendment. So, move to substitute the attached Exhibit A for the previous exhibit.
Second.
Second by, motion by councilmember Van Hout, second by councilmember Yubera of the amendment as so stated. Is there any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment as proposed?
Aye.
All right, now, all in favor of the ordinance as have been read as amended signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Gets down to 201640.
Ordnance 201640, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Pasadena, Texas, at Chapter 37, by amending Section 3734, water rates prescribed; Section 3735, sewer charges prescribed; Section 3736, against whom, levied; and Section 3749, sanitary sewer rehabilitation. prescribed; Section 3736, against whom levied; and Section 3749, sanitary sewer rehabilitation charge and establishing an effective date.
Motion.
Motion by council member Jeff, was it Jeff? Okay. Second.
Yes, it does, for lack of a second.
Second.
I don't know why you said it.
Motion by Wagner, second by Lehman, that ordinance 2016-40, we adopt, pass on second and final reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? You better speak up instead of playing games.
You're not? We have one amendment on two things here. This is changing the sprinklers.
Can you hold just a half a second on the amendment? Councilman Wheeler wanted to pause for a minute. Why don't you go ahead?
I was gonna wait for, I thought we were gonna amend.
Okay. Are you through with all discussions on this one?
I stand right now, yes.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Changing the base rate on the sprinklers, and the other is, we're looking at changing the rates for the water and sewer, and also putting in something so that we look at the CPI, the consumer.
Price index.
Okay. I would think of it eventually, Consumer Price Index each year, look at it in September, and adjust the rates according to what it's done in the past year. But, the way this was written would have us start doing that this September, so the rates would go up in April, and we would look at them again this September and bump the rates up again this year. And it was decided, we don't want to raise the rate twice in the same year, so this amendment is going to put the CPI off to take effect next year. And then you would see very minor changes each year rather than a large change every five or six years. So, move to amend ordinance 2016-40 on final reading as follows, to substitute the attached Exhibit A, changing Section 3734, water rates prescribed, five irrigation sprinklers, residential and commercial, minimum charge per unit or meter served, 2,000 gallons or less, $14, and amend Section 2 of the ordinance by adding, however, Section 3749 shall become effective October 1st, 2017, to the end of the section.
Motion by council member Van Hout. Is there a second? Is there a second?
This one submitted by the department.
Second.
Wow. Motion by council member Van Hout, second by council member Morrison, as so stated, is there any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment as proposed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Yes, do you? Okay. Councilman Huber votes no. Everybody else votes yes.
Correction, Mayor. Yes, on it.
Yes. Both passes unanimous on the amendment. And then it gets us back to amended ordinance 2016-040. All those in favor of amended ordinance 2016-40, signify by saying aye?
Mayor.
I was under pressure through pre-council that we were going to amend to strike the CPI, or if not, I'll make a motion right now to strike the CPI aspect of the ordinance from this, from ordinance 2016-40.
Okay. Motion by council member Wheeler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Huber. All right, all those in favor?
Is it members' question?
Certainly.
So, what this is doing right here, we're taking these water rates, we haven't had a water rate increase since 2005, and so I can understand the need to do an increase. This is a proposed 15% increase. The issue with this is, is not only are we doing a 15% increase, but starting next year, the water rates are going to go up automatically every year without council's approval. And if you look at the past five years as a benchmark, the CPI has increased from 2010 to 2016 19.47%, so almost a 20% increase. So, you're looking at an upfront initial increase of 15%, and over the next six years, an almost another 20% increase in these water rates. And so, I could see one or the other, if we implemented a CPI to our water rates now, where you see incremental increases over the years, or if you do a single increase now, but this is a combination of both, where you're getting upfront hit of 15%, and then over the next six years, an additional 20% increase on water rates, with in mind that we already have $23 million in reserve as it stands now. I think this is a little heavy to hit, that's why I made this ordinance, or this motion for an amendment on this ordinance.
Well.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
Let me correct something real quick. We did have a water rate increase in 2012, I believe, 2013, actually, it might have been 2012. We haven't had a sewer rate increase in 2005. The reason that I'm against this ordinance and the other one that comes after this is basically this, as a council member, you elect me to make that decision when I'm going to raise your property tax, your fees, your water rates and stuff like that. By automatically going for the CPI, it takes that power away from the council. So, you can basically, in theory, can have a double taxation. We can implement the CPI, and if the need is out there, we're running out of surplus in that particular council system fund, basically, the council, it comes for the council again in an ordinance, and we can actually vote to increase your water rate and sewer rate again to include the CPI. To me, I am fine with the ordinance as a whole. The problem that I got is, look, I got elected by you to make that decision, win the rate, certain rates for you, and I think it takes the power away from the council, so I can support. That'll happen.
Any further discussion? Well, let me say, I think it's the least painful on the citizens of Pasadena to have a minimal increase, and it's 1.9% average for the last 10 years, is what it amounts to, about the price of a hamburger. This way, we sure we can keep up with the economy some couple of years. The CPI was zero, so there'd be no rate increase for that. But, for the last 10 years, it was 1.9, I believe, almost 2%, and I don't think that's unreasonable at all. We have a lot of needs in the city of Pasadena on our infrastructure, our water lines and our sewer lines, and of course, we'll never be like Flint, Michigan, they had steel lines, but we've got to replace our infrastructure, and this kind of puts it in on an automatic pace to get that done. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment as proposed by council member Wheeler and Huber, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, as I see, it was, the noes were Bruce, I vote no.
No.
Bass votes no. Jeff votes no.
No.
And Morrison votes no. So, the motion fails. And I say, I voted no. Motion fails. Gets us back to amended 2016-040. All those in favor of amended 2016-040, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Huber and Wheeler vote no. Motion passes. Okay, now we get to 41.
Ordnance 2016-41, amending the code of ordinance of the city of Pasadena, Texas at Chapter 37 by amending Section 3741 due date, delinquencies, disputed charges, Section 3746 miscellaneous water service charges, and by adding a new Section 3751, establishment and funding of a water sewer reserve, permitted withdrawals, and establishing an effective date.
Aye, for lack of a motion.
Motion by council member Huber, second by council member Morrison, was it? That ordinance 2016-041 pass on second and final reading. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
I thought this one was pretty unanimous.
I got a discussion.
Okay.
As you see, if I believe in something, I'm going to make a motion. And what happens is, you have an ordinance before, and you have an ordinance right here where everybody stays silent. If you believe in the water rates and you believe in the amendment in particular ordinance, you're going to motion it, and you're going to have conviction, you're going to say why you support it and why you don't support it. But, with that being said, there was a comment made about the fact that there's a lot of work that needs to be done predominantly on the north side of Pasadena, and there is going to be work done. Let's not kid ourselves, not lie, there is a lot of things on the agenda here that can actually benefit the north side of Pasadena, which is needed. But, the reason that it's like that is because it's been neglected.
Councilman, can I stop you? Are you talking about 04?
Yes.
41?
Yes, sir.
Well, there's nothing about rates in there.
No, it's about the water rate. It's about the water line.
It's the cancellation appointments and the fund.
I thought we were voting on 41.
We haven't gotten to the amendment yet.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead.
Well, back to my discussion. Basically, what it was is that the work, the reason we have the issues in North Pasadena and throughout Pasadena, especially on those part of town, is due to neglect. It didn't happen overnight. These water lines have been bad since I was a kid, and we went year after year and after year and never did anything with them, and so, that's the reason I can't support it. That'll happen.
Any further discussion? All those in, let's see, oh, I'm sorry, Pat?
We do have an amendment on this one.
You may enter it now.
This amendment is also changing two things. We had some bad wording as far as saying that if somebody sets an appointment and somebody from the water department goes out to meet them and the person doesn't show up, they get a fee because somebody took their time to go out and meet them. But, there's also something wording about if they call and cancel, and it sounded like if they called and canceled way ahead of time, they'd still have the fee. So, this is fixing the wording on that, and it was also written in here to keep a 90-day reserve, just like in the general fund, it's good business practice that you don't spend everything in the fund. You keep a two-months operating balance to cover any emergencies. Well, what we had in this ordinance was setting up a three-month reserve for the water and sewer fund, a, basically, a stricter set of rules than what we have with the general fund, and so, this is changing it to two months. Move to amend ordinance 2016-41 on final reading to substitute the attached Exhibit A, Section 3746 miscellaneous water service charges A18. If the customer or designated representative does not keep the scheduled appointment or cancels the appointment within one hour before the appointment, a $20 service charge shall apply. And Section 3751, establishing and funding of a water sewer reserve, permitted withdrawals A2, reserve should be maintained at 60 days worth of the prior fiscal year operating expenditures.
Motion by council member Van Hout. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Bass, of the amendment as so stated, is there any discussion on the amendment as so stated? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilmember Huber votes no. Motion passes, so the amendment attaches to amendment, amended ordinance 2016-41. All those in favor of amended ordinance 2016-041, signify by saying aye?
Mayor.
I didn't get an option to discuss this.
Well, you got to speak up, councilman.
I'm voting no against this, mainly for the aspect of this ordinance that deals with senior citizens. This is removing the extra grace period senior citizens get, the forgiveness they get if they're late on their water bill. I mean, I believe the senior citizens are owed that little bit of extra time, so I'll be voting no against this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Huber, if either vote no, motion passes. Okay, it gets down to first readings.
Ordnance 2016-44, contract with Civil Concepts, Inc., for surveying services for Shaw Street 12-inch waterline project and appropriating $10,700.
Motion. Motion by council member Lehman.
Second.
Second by council member Bass, that ordinance 2016-44 pass on first reading only. This is Shaw Street 12-inch waterline project and appropriating $10,700 for the surveying services for that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-45, amend ordinance number 2016-10, which approved the sale of approximately 5.080 acres of vacant land to change the name from Ralph Walkman, F.L.P., to Basswater LLC.
Motion.
Motion by council member Wheeler.
Second.
Second by council member Van Hout, that reading, ordinance 2016-45 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-46, upgrade from Sun Guard Public Sector of Sun Guard Finance Plus and Community Plus Software to current version and appropriating $55,360.
Motion.
Motion by council member Wheeler.
Second.
Second by council member Van Hout, that ordinance 2016-46 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-47, amend Lee Superior Ordinance Number 2014-137 of certain property at 1,001 Shaw Avenue, Pasadena, Texas.
Motion.
Motion by council member Wheeler.
Second.
Second by council member Bass, that ordinance 2016-47 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to comment on this piece of property. The city's going to be saving, we're going to go from about 32,000 to about 19,000, so we're going to be saving quite a bit of money on, when we do this, by moving the fire department.
That's correct. Any further discussion? We'll be moving the fire department, the fire marshal's office to city-owned facilities now and save quite a bit of money per month. Councilmember Bass is exactly correct. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-48, authorizing observation of the San Jacinto Holiday by the city of Pasadena for the 2016 calendar year only on Friday, April 22nd, 2016.
Motion.
Motion by council member Leonard. Second by council member Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-48 pass on first reading only. This is allowing our employees to have a three-day weekend, just moving the date one day. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-49, contract with Project Surveillance, Inc., for construction inspection services related to various city projects, CIP W-029 and WW-027, and appropriating $226,032.
So moved.
Motion by council member Morrison, second by council member Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-49 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Gets down to resolutions, Madam Secretary.
Resolution 2016-23, approving the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2015.
Motion.
Motion by council member Wheeler.
Second.
Second by council member Lehman, that resolution 2016-23 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-24, donation of $25 from Marion Libby to be applied toward collection material.
Motion.
Motion by council member Wheeler.
Second.
Second by council member Van Hout, that resolution 2016-24 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-25, donation of a day rental for trees valued at $2,000 from Shades of Texas John Matthews to decorate for the mayor's state-of-the-city speech.
Motion.
Motion by council member Wheeler.
Second.
Second by council member Bass, that ordinance, excuse me, resolution 2016-25 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-26, donations of goods or services from various businesses and organizations with a total value $7,148 for the multipurpose center and program.
Motion.
Motion by council member Wheeler, second by council member Lehman, that resolution 2016-26 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-27, donations from various businesses, organizations, and individuals totaling $10,590 for the multipurpose center and programs.
Move.
Motion by councilmember Van Hout, second by councilmember Wheeler. That resolution 2016-27 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-28, donations of $1,150 from ABC Dental, Pasadena and Cupcakes, valued at $108 from HEB for the Share Our Vision sponsorship luncheon.
Motion.
Motion by councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by councilmember Van Hout. That resolution 2016-28 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-29, appointing and reappointing members to the board of directors of the city of Pasadena Crime Control and Prevention District.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by councilmember Lehman. That resolution 2016-29 be adopted as it was read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries.